Yeah.
That should be going. This is.
Yep. We're live.
Okay. Hallelujah. It only took ten times to get this right.
Okay, it is seven oh two. I'm gonna call to order the select board, Newfield Select Board Meeting for Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. We have quite a bit on calendar today, so.
Mr. Chair, may I have your question moments in honor of that event?
I think that would be very appropriate. Thank you very much. First up on the agenda, we have Dan Prosternik, who is the owner, operator of the restaurant and new facility over on New Road in one oh eight. Here to talk about parking issues that came with the planning board. So with that, Dan, I'll let you present.
Okay. I imagine we're discussing controversy with the parking on the road. As just sort of continue from the last meeting, I just want to reiterate that. I think the issues, or the possible issues will come from the happens, where we may have too many items on there, and people and so forth. I imagine at that time, we had contracts. So you guys have a property, we have a contract that would go to our clients that states, tie that back on the elevator. That states that we're only allowed to be applying thirty parking spaces. After that, they'll have to provide their own transportation, whether it's possible to do whatever. In addition, they'll be the customer required to have police detail, they have to hire a police detail by their own doing. That would be for no expense. I talked to the chief about it, and that's obviously doable, whether it's from your apartment or somewhere outside. We'll make sure that that happens, so they'll be direct traffic. They will be enforcing the parking, as well as I believe handling any issue that may arise, which we don't know without. So I feel free to talk about that again. That's not gonna really happen until next year, so we'll have some time to. We have a couple of small events in the book, so we'll have some time to sort of see how things flow, or logistics, all that kind of stuff. So that's as far as that, and as far as the restaurant goes, we have, in the front, basically parking, we have maybe twenty, twenty-four slots? Twenty-four spaces. We have the other side, which eventually, we did get approval from D O T since last meeting. Eventually, that will be enlarged and have another twenty, twenty-five spaces. So if every car, I'm not sure exactly what. Sorry.
I'm sorry, the D O T's by educating.
So if you're looking at the building, the right side, the houses, we have approval from D O T to widen the area, to expand that lot to accommodate multiple events going forward. But I imagine that we can use some of that parking in the interim for overflow for the restaurant side. So if every customer, I'm not sure what the formula is of the numbers, maybe it's two people per car, maybe it's one and a half. So if we have there fifty spaces or forty spaces, that being people, that's really more people than we can accommodate anyway. So you know, I'm thinking a situation where, hey, I'm sorry to recall anyways, you don't even have, you don't even have to park out of the room. But I believe we had verbal approval from the storage unit across the street for another ten spaces. So I think like thanks to the dust settles, as I mentioned, to the chief, you know, any restaurant, they'll always give you this, no matter what it is. It's just anticipation, in this case, a very long anticipation, and people in the block there. So I know it's gonna take us a week or two to figure out how things are gonna flow, and just how it's gonna work, to worry about the parking.
When you were talking about that capacity, does that include the parking?
Yeah, so we approved seventy-one seats. I think it's seventy-six. Seventy-six seats. I think there's seventeen bar seats, or maybe. Yeah, seventy-six. Seventy-six whole seats. We have all our, I think, Jeff, chief, fire chief's coming Monday. We have Larry's coming in the fall. Larry's the last guy on the following Thursday. But our decision will be one of this nineteen before he goes on vacation. We hope to open the fall. We had a good week. We can have established for training for the staff, cooks, testing out the staff, all that kind of stuff. So that's our, that's our whole plan. And, you know, yeah, I know that the issue or concern is New Road. I have been there, so I don't know in the past what's happened, or what the issues are and so forth. I'm sure people are pretty sure to have it, and use that when it's needed. And I know we have discussed how it's gonna work, and I can only ask that, you know, if it's needed, we have the building, use it, but, you know, yeah. My hope.
Other questions? It's gonna be a broken record here, and maybe I didn't catch it. But what's wrong with having an arrangement with Rocky Hill Mall, that parking space, paying a couple hundred dollars when you have it in the flow? So they don't say to us, "We may or may not use New Road." Just say, "We're not gonna use New Road, period." And we are gonna take care of it. We got two hundred, we got a hundred people for overflow. We'll take care of the valet service, and we'll move them over to the space.
Yeah, that's got it. Yeah, that's definitely an option. So what we've found in the past is when you have events like this, and the bar party set out their invite, they'll listen to it, the hotels, whatever. So normally, what's happened is the majority of the party will stay at this, whatever the state is, the best source and that. And they happen to make arrangements to have higher rate of availability to bus allocation. But yes, that's something that we definitely had discussed. You know, for us, the ideal for the, you know, some of the abudders need buy, to use that overflow, it is definitely, we're gonna have a connection for sure.
Just hope doesn't create.
Let's go ahead. Have you been with Rocky Hill?
I'm sorry?
Have you talked to Rocky Hill?
The golf course, the ball meeting? We have not, at this point, yet. Obviously, that'd be a great avenue to go down, so. And again, just the functions where the issues may arise, we have open starts on X P O, so hopefully, we have those. Maybe on a trolley, maybe on a bus, I don't know.
How many peeps are you expecting on the outside for these contracts?
I think we have the building to up to two hundred. What we've, you know, we've been paying like for twenty-five years, and every Saturday, we have five, six events. I'd say the average event is a hundred people. You know, summer seventy-five, summer one twenty-five. I think you guys, that we used through the past, what happened, or for a lot of reasons, but we have the building to take up the joint. With the space that we have, and so forth.
So I've weighed in on this on the planning board from Bergen Day. And when you initially came with planning board, it was just for the events, because the idea with who are bussing people, obviously with the restaurant as well, it creates an entirely different traffic and parking situation. And as I stated then, and I still feel pretty strongly about the problem with allowing people to park on that road, is that the guy who gets there late, the seven people who get there late, they will see cars on that road, and they will find ways to park there. And while, yes, you can, you can require your client to make parking arrangements, there's no way they're gonna be able to address that type of issue. And while I can appreciate the idea of what you're suggesting here, in my opinion, given the narrowness of that road, given the concerns of several of the abudders on that road, and given the concerns I've said before, I, I think allowing commercial entities to utilize a town roads like that is not a good idea. We don't allow it down on Garvey, for the most part. We don't allow it on other commercial properties, certainly not, there's not the newest parking on One Oh Eight. But in my opinion, I would rather nip this problem in the bud and not have it become a problem that we then later have to address. So, and I've made it clear from the beginning, and, you know, and like, like I said, I appreciate your efforts, but I think with the changes that you've made, I, I think that parking on New Road should not, should not be done here. And the planning board made a condition of approval that you address this board and get a determination from this board. But at the end of the day, this board will make a, will inform the planning board of what is determined here, and that will be part of the approval process for their planning.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, when you say changes that you made, what do you mean?
If, in terms of our determination whether you are allowed to park or are not allowed to park, we'll be informing the planning board, because it's, they, they provided a conditional approval of your plan. So we'll be informing them, so that that condition is noted as part of the end of the plan approval. I'll open up for any comments in the general. Oh, go ahead, what do you want to go?
Are the restaurant and the events exclusive, or can they both be transparked?
Depends on the size of the event.
Twenty persons, why are people at the event, are you gonna keep the restaurant? I mean, I know it's a wagon.
Yeah, it's a good question. And I feel like we're obviously likely to go. There may be a situation that we have an event where it would be, it's feasible that we, in fact, that's for us to shut down restaurants to be outside of, which is, I would say, you know, the event's established, it's more open for the restaurants also. If we can do that. But like you said, if it's a fifty-person event, and we can still put it inside, yes. But again, it's, it's a lot of trying there.
Totally understand what you're doing with your trying to balance it out, and trying to get the fuel.
Sure.
So if you have a hundred and twenty-five people at the event, and so if you get the restaurant option, you're talking about both of the peeps.
Well, that's again, why I'm moving into thirty, thirty spaces, so.
Along those lines, I assume you're gonna be having the ice cream stand open while the restaurant is open?
There's, sorry. I was gonna say, we haven't thought about the ice cream stand yet, yes.
But it's part of the permitted use now.
It is, but it's.
I, I mean, we have to consider it, because you're now allowed to do it. We can't just say, well, we're not gonna do it anymore. Because from that standpoint, you're allowed to do it, and the town can't stop you from doing it if you decide to do it. And like, again, the issue there being, now you're talking about, I don't know, go to Liveos on a, on a Saturday night. If you have the restaurant open, and you're getting ice cream stand traffic, I guarantee you, people will be all over that place. And it, not necessarily an event, are you gonna be having my police detail up there every Friday night? And who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah, I have, again, is there a time limit? If you get approved of something that has to be transparked?
What do you mean?
Like, if you get approved to do something, is there a time limit? It has to be opened by, started by, or anything along those lines?
Not, I, I, I'm not aware of that, but what I'm saying is, you've already been permitted for an ice cream stand.
Yeah.
You can say, you know, we're not gonna do that, but we have to assume that that ice cream, ice cream stand is gonna be built, because you requested it, and it's been permitted.
So we're looking at worst case scenario?
Yeah. That's our job.
But it's like, you know, if you go to an ice cream place, and there's a hundred cars, you can't get in, or they keep driving, or whatever. You can only give them.
I understand, but you appreciate what we have to look at.
You know what they're gonna do, though. There's a hundred people gonna be there, there's gonna be thirty people at your restaurant on Friday night, or Saturday night in the summer, where the weather is nice. And people will then start parking improperly on New Road. And that's not gonna be a time where you're gonna have the police detail, because we're not even talking about an event. You get, you get, you know, seven to eight o'clock on a, on a lovely, you know, summer evening on the weekend, you're gonna get sixty people showing up there for ice creams.
I love your ideas, I hope that's better than me either.
But, but again, that, this is my concern. It's great for you for business. It's bad for the town, and our interests are really in the town. And what I'm saying here is, if we, if we are, if we are not nipping this in the bud, it's gonna become a problem. And putting the toothpaste back in the tube around here becomes a real problem with businesses. That's why, again, from the beginning, I've had concerns about this, and that has a chance.
Chief, you have anything to add to what I said you brought to us?
I mean, I think, obviously, from what he said, we don't know how busy it's gonna be. We expect it to be really busy when they first open the restaurant. Likely, the event's not starting for ten months. Police detail, I don't think that parking will be an issue when there's a police officer there, because he or she will run and park on New Road. So that's not my worry. The events, I have no concerns about that many people being bussed in, because I can't, I'm not gonna take the trouble of the bus. So the police detail there will take care of it. There won't, there won't be a problem with the parking there, if there's a police officer there. As for the event itself, you know, the restaurant that opens, we know it's gonna be busy, you know, in a couple weeks when it opens. You know, like I said, the ice cream stands, you know, like I said. We don't know. You know, I mean, I guess to a point, we're not, we're not police, we'll check it, we have complaints, I assume. You know, just with anything else we've done, if we run across an issue, we work with the homeowner or the business owner to address it. And if it doesn't get addressed, then it either comes back here to the pool of selection, or you start getting cars towed and ticketed, and we address the issue that way. This is probably not the best way to deal with it as a business, but we also have to keep the road safe and make sure we're getting points.
You know, again, I'm in this area, I don't know, but we have no history with fire restaurants that do have people that did use New Road, which, obviously, applies to that, and I feel like, you know, we've, we've gunned this whole building, we've put it five times where we thought we're gonna leave it. Hence, we hoped it'd be busy, and it'd be busier than the folks did in the past. And I just feel like we don't, can't afford to turn away this business, because people don't have the place to park, and where they did in the past, and now they're saying they can't do it. And I understand, and I appreciate their concerns, and I think, you know, what the chief says, you know, let's give it a shot, see what happens, and if it doesn't work, we can face it.
Fair. I'm just trying to think where, where it is overflow parking. How close are you to the sports complex? That's a walk.
So. Yeah, over the block on this road.
The, not the sports.
And there's, there's no real sidewalk?
Yeah, what? It's a coast side, like.
And it's on the other side of the railroad tracks, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, we are near New Road.
You'd have to, you'd almost have to bust them from there.
Yeah.
To some extent, which, again, I'm not advocating for. You have thirty spaces?
We have like twenty, twenty-four plus. Twenty-four plus some on the other side of the house, as well.
And the storage person, is that locked in?
Well, that's it.
It's kinda hard if you can catch her.
They have the house with the sun, the way I mentioned, it said verbally, it's okay, but, you know. So, I'm sorry, I just clarified. If there is a non-event going on, it's just business issues, usual, it's a lot of stuff, it's not a bad, right? Parking's a parking, there's no spaces, you just leave it, right? Isn't that what you're there?
I'm sorry, do you have anything?
If there's not an event going on, you know, a hundred-person event, no police detail, anything like that, people can just park in the bonus park, right?
No.
Okay, so what's changed, you know, this three years?
So what's changed is that you came before the, the planning board, and it was not open the restaurant, it was doing the event venue, right? And you said, you told the planning board, "We don't intend to open the restaurant, the restaurant. We're doing an event venue."
Right.
And they, and you received approvals for that.
Yeah.
Then you came back and said, "Oh, nope, we're gonna open the restaurant."
Yeah.
I, I could argue hypothetically. If you had come and opened the restaurant first, you would have had a hell of a hard time getting approvals for the event venue. Be- because of this issue. Because now you're talking about the restaurant would have been taking up all the existing parking, and now you're gonna do events for two hundred people, that you would have a hard time, I, my opinion, you would have had a hell of a hard time trying to get that through. Now, we've also added now the ice cream stand, which creates additional traffic for six months of the year, five months of the year, whatever it is, especially on weekends. So it, it is, you approached the town with an entirely different idea for that property, which the town said, "Okay, yeah, we'll work with you on." You didn't come and say, "No, no, we're just gonna open the restaurant." And so the town is not considering this as, "Oh, it's just a restaurant, the same as it ever was," because it's not. It's, it's an entirely different use of that property.
By the way, that wasn't our intention.
I'm not saying it was your intention or not, I'm just saying, just for, so everybody understands, how this came before the town, and the rationale for the decisions the planning board made to make approvals, even though, like for an event of two hundred, there's no way that that site would comply with our parking requirements. But given what you guys said about the restaurant, the restaurant really wasn't gonna be used, I think, in my opinion, the planning board, I think, was willing to work with you for a, a, basically, a different use of the property, and allow you to do that, despite the fact that the parking probably was not adequate for an event of two hundred. So when you came and asked for the restaurant, now we're really creating issues that your original plan might not have had. And I think that's why, again, I, I, I told the planning board, I said, "Okay, you can have the restaurant, but there's no way we're gonna park on New Road," because this is creating, in my opinion, a serious potential for traffic problems there, parking problems there. And I would rather nip it in the bud now than have my police going up there all the time. I, I mean, personally, I, I get it, sure, it's great for have a police detail up there and get paid for it, but that's not, that's not really their jobs. And, and I think that certainly on Friday night or Saturday night, when you don't have an event, and on a summer night, there'll be a hell of a problem, and the police detail isn't gonna be there, because they're not required. So.
How many tables do you have?
Tables or seats?
Seats.
Seventy, seventy-six, yeah.
Seventy-six, okay. So I've worked in restaurants, and you're gonna be busy, right? So you're probably gonna turn that room over twice in an, in an evening. That's a hundred and forty people coming through there. So I'm just looking at it rationally, it's, the thirty-five spaces is tight. So it's probably a good idea for you to make some arrangement with that space place next door. Lock them down. Well, I'm, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, I'm just saying, if I lose, if I own that restaurant, I'd be like, "We're gonna pay rent for X amount, because we're gonna need that overflow."
Sure.
On Friday and Saturday night. You, you, you know, if you're doing the numbers, you know, and you got a brand name, so people are gonna be coming there, right? Especially if you have really good wings, so the wing's gonna be good, and that's the main.
You'll find out actually.
I mean, but that, I mean, I can, I can see that point, that, you know, you're gonna have traffic coming through there.
Yeah, I like you said, you know, I opened, you know, five, six, seven restaurants, and you just don't know what's gonna happen. And as I mentioned, we could start crap, and we're gonna be slammed first week, or whatever. That's not the case, but I guess with this aspect of that, we just see how it flows, and obviously, it's up to you guys and the chief. You know, just see what happens, and address it as it does, as opposed to shutting it down in the neighborhood.
Again, in my opinion, it is far easier for us, a year from now, or two years from now, if we see how, what that traffic looks like, to say, "Okay, yeah, we can consider allowing parking on New Road." I take out the gate, we let it happen, putting the toothpaste back in the tube is a hell of a problem. Personally, I, I don't wanna deal with it. Jeff?
So, obviously, there's two differences within the restaurant, within the events, okay? The ice cream shop is not open yet, it's gonna have an additional twenty-five spots over there, okay, eventually. Okay, not right now, right?
Right. And that's. So, there, when there's the event, there won't be ice cream anymore, so that's twenty-five spots.
Right, exactly. So technically, you could, you could park some people over on that now. You know, I think, you know, my concern is, the first couple of weeks when you get this up and running, you know, we've always allowed, you know, maybe we haven't allowed parking on New Road, but if you, if you've driven down here, okay, there's plenty of spots on either side of the road to pull out completely off the road. I mean, it's a very wide road before you get to the bridge. I, I personally don't think this is gonna be an issue initially, okay? Events is a different story, you know, achieving and the test of that. And once they start doing events, that's, that's where we're gonna, we're gonna need, you know, some, some parking concerns. But I, I don't think we should, you know, shortchange these folks. You know, we, people have been parking on New Road for thirty years, okay? And it's, we've never had an issue, we've never had an accident down there. I know we've had a few people complain, we've never had an accident on New Road, okay? Where people park, okay, for local parking for the restaurant. Now, there's a challenge here right now, okay, with Stratton Fire, for example, people parking in the lot, okay? I just, I saw today that that, that lot is actually, is, is, is gonna be leased, they're, they're advertising it as, as a, as a commercial warehouse. So, so that might change, okay? But I, I don't think we should shortchange these folks initially, okay? And I get what you guys are saying, I, I totally understand, but, you know, Jeff and I have been on the bar party for a long time. I've never seen an accident on New Road, other than a tree falling for one day, containing a power plant. You know, the issue with One Oh Eight, okay? There's a lot of traffic on One Oh Eight at certain times of the day, that's when we get the accidents. New Road is, if you get a ticket ride down there, there is plenty of room to pull off New Road, to be completely off the road, okay? And I, again, I don't think we should short, shortchange these folks initially, until we find out really what's gonna, what it's gonna look like down there.
Well, to that point, Jeff, why don't we not do this now? Again, the precedent, precedent is not, and, and again, what you're not thinking about is, restaurant on Friday night, and the ice cream stand is open, and there is no police detail.
Right, I, I get it.
I, I would rather run through that and see how it goes, and if it's not a problem, great, well, we address it. Then if you do it now, you know what happens? People get accommodated to, "Hey, I can park on the road, I'm gonna keep parking on the road." So that's what will happen. And then, then we deal with the two issues that Chief talked about, which is, we start towing people, which is not really what we wanna do. Or we're back here, having to address this once again, which, again, I'd rather not do that.
So if you have the fifty, you have fifty spaces then, in other words, right?
Well.
Okay, so just again, doing the math, if you're gonna fill that bill, right? You would need seventy spaces.
Well, they don't call at the same time.
I agree, but let's just say, let's just say, people coming in and out, you might need another fifteen or twenty spots. Is it possible for you to make that difference? So that you can save to people that are concerned?
You know, I think we'll, we have those spaces, we, this is new to me, and Jeff said that, that we, some of the least that space they have, which tends to be, to use until they're tired. It runs out in the nation, you know?
Storage, it is a storage.
Yes, I think it's ten spaces still.
Yeah, so that would be great.
Yeah, you know, that, that would be an idea. And I, I don't mind having this conversation, you know, I'm hoping it's not an issue, but we're taking the worst case scenario, the best case scenario. Again, we're just trying to.
Do business.
I think there's some room to deal with that a little bit. I think, I don't think we need to make that, you know, an ultimate anxiety. I think, let's, let's, let's.
The, 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 I'm sorry, they can't, without, without, it's conditioned on a determination from this board. If we don't make a determination, their, their planning board plan isn't formally approved.
Right.
We have to do this tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Jeff?
So you gotta post, send me posts to the bar, on, on the official site?
So that's what we're gonna determine tonight.
No, I'm just questioning, I'm just.
My, my recommendation is, yes, we would require posting on New Road that there's no parking. That's my argument. Obi?
Two things. Is parking in the past been on both sides of the road?
Is that in Jerk's?
No, it is fine.
You know, usually on the right hand side of the road, the left-hand side is very, there's a lot of space over there. There's more, compared to the past, you've seen on the right-hand side.
Well, and, and the other point that I'll raise is, was the planning board's concerns and discussion. Residents and folks who are using the road for walking and biking were not happy with parking on the road.
Those people were new car, they weren't new folks.
Don't understand, but.
So, so, yeah.
Don't understand. Put a sidewalk. Put a sidewalk. Where, where is Brian?
That, I'm rejecting that one. Ken?
Yeah, I was a long-time resident, I mean, kept recalling in the past, seeing parking being kind of an issue for road maintenance, snow quality. As I go by that road on my bicycle, I kind of don't have the definition that it's a wide road and plenty of space directly in front of the establishment, but it's kind of narrow. And I, I just get the feeling that you got people. And, and I, I just get the feeling that you got people parking, and I recognize pedestrians and motor vehicle traffic. In a place that just shouldn't be.
Hey, Kevin, I don't think this is a, hey, hey, Jeff, don't do that, don't do that.
So, that's, that's, that's my, my take on, on, on parking on New Road, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a wide road, like, in the past, seeing them parking on pavement, parking on pavement. I can't recall on the left side, I know they have these space stations, uh, parking in the fast, and I think that's a good idea. When the ballroom was mentioned, I thought, well, there'd be a part of the interest there, because the ballroom has events, weekend nights, basically, and that's prime business nights for restaurants to be at.
They may take your wing.
That's just, that's, that's my observation, so with this discussion, whatever.
If I can interject one little thought, so, uh, with every action, there's an equal reaction, the opposite direction, right? So, if those parking spaces start getting filled up on New Road, then, maybe the answer would be, we would put a no parking sign there, and then you'd be, the owners would be able to figure out where people are gonna park. I mean, that, that would be maybe the other option.
With, with most restaurants, there's no parking.
Goes that way.
You know, I mean, I, we can't, you know, someone parks a mile away, we, we can't go tell them, you know, I mean, we have our property, it's all in control, you know? I mean, like you said, we want to do whatever we can to have legal, safe parking, so.
You know, if that happens, maybe that's what might happen, right? I mean, and, I, I'm, I'm pro-business, I like, I want a restaurant in the town, I think it would be fantastic, you know? But I understand, you know, maybe the neighbors might get missed by, uh, being on New Road, maybe there's safety issue, I don't know, but, but for the purposes of you getting approval, I think, my own two cents is, you should say to this board, we're gonna get it taken care of by making sure we have spaces over at the storage, that's all.
Yeah, I see. So, we're not in control of it, we can grill, again, if we can do that, if we can get the spaces a little higher than New Road's line, it's an issue. We only have so many seats, so many people we can fit in there, you know, so, you have to pay sorry, or it's a bullet, or not another day, whatever it is, you know? So.
Jeff, do you have a comment?
I was just curious about the road that runs alongside, um, W. D. Phillips.
Darby?
Winkler.
Winkler, it's our.
Town Road.
Winkler is a town road, yes.
Probably, here's get across the highway.
Well, if they're, if they're willing to, um, shuttle, it would be up to the people that are shuttling, if cars come through, and they get the ballot.
Oh, wait, you, no, wait, you don't.
A ballot, yeah, a ballot.
But that's a lot of hard across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty long.
Yeah, it would be, so, it's a pretty long road. I don't even know what's that.
Knipstein, and Garby's trying to redevelop the front.
But, but so they cross the street.
Good point.
They have control, there's also, they have, of course, a challenge.
Any other comments from the general public? I, I'm gonna make a motion, as I indicated earlier, I, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we do not allow parking along New Road, and, uh, require posting as such, to prevent parking along New Road as the condition that was required under the planning.
Can I amend that? Throw, maybe throw it my way, and we'll revisit it in a year.
I have no problem with revisiting, I have no problem revisiting it less than a year, but, you, you wanna make that a condition, one year, sure. Is that a second?
I'm sorry.
Would that give, I may give a big wait, so.
All right, uh, motion's been made, amended, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? No, all right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
So, can I ask what's, what's happening, how's the, I'm really, uh?
Uh, you're required to post along New Road, no parking.
We have posted, we have posted.
Uh, well, we'll post, your, your request, post on your property, in, in, any, any, right away, on your property for New Road, if there's no parking, we'll take care of the park, no parking signs for the rest of New Road.
By the way, thank you, property, I hope we have no problem.
I, I don't know, I, I don't recall the frontage there, in terms of where it is, but, again, point being is, we're not gonna allow parking on New Road.
But we do have the option to come back and revisit it in a year, and so you get a feel for how it's working, so maybe we can find a way to make it work. So, at least the points that Jeff raised, J two, uh, and see if we can find something, if we don't have issues.
Turn around and, certainly, on, like, these.
Worst-case scenario, you know, with, with the ice cream in the restaurant, and maybe a fifty person event.
Just trying to.
That good?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, next up, September trustees. Is Ann here? No?
Uh, no, we, that's a, like, conference.
Does?
Ann had a, maybe, to.
Oh.
I don't know. Sam, and myself, and Sweet, and this is a property of our project. Thank you, Anna. Yes, we, yes, we're talking about ready issues here.
Oh, my goodness. He did it later.
So, I'm glad you got to the end. Um, you presented the question for a number of years, it has been, uh,
Yeah.
Um, we have asked for a name basis, we've had negotiated, um, the law minutes, which is a major issue, everything else remains the same, with the law, money, services. And we have a negotiating three-year contract, which started this year, uh, two thousand twenty-four, and we'll push it forward here. And, uh, by doing that, we've went up a little bit, so we're asking for seven hundred and thirty-five thou, new three percent budget, which is pretty tiny compared to, you know, the whole thirty-five dollars.
Two point three percent.
But anyway, it's, uh, uh, gone from thirty-one thousand, something to, 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 to here.
Oh, that's, 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 uh, similar to thirty.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, anyway, uh, it's.
So, um, you have a contract already, ready to go for next year, in plans, so you know the pricing?
Yes, you do, yeah, the three-year contract actually started at the beginning of two thousand twenty-four, so this is the end of our, almost the end of our first year. And we have two more years, so we know that that figure is stable.
And, uh, the repairs are making this just an estimate for what you think you may need to do, or want to do over the course of the year?
Um, we're trying to repair some of the center stones that our dad showed us. We, we try to a little bit every two or three years, um, it's hard to find someone to do that.
The general, the stone restoration is still, it's hard to get, you know?
We have a professional that we have hired and cast, and, um, he's done a very good job, and we've gotten, I think, the, um, so, for that, we're honestly, let's, let's work that.
How much, how many stones do you have? Two or three, five? I mean, I understand, there are.
There's a lot, you know, every year they're starting, it increases, and particularly over the winters, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a few.
So, it's two or three?
It's, 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 almost more historically significant than others, not that, not that that's, you know, a big thing, some of the hard, it's harder to sort.
So, you can spend five or six on one stone easily?
Not usually that, not usually that much.
How much, like, two, three?
Um, probably more than that, I think, yeah. It all depends, but some of them are not repairable. Some of them we, we can't, and we just have to line them down, because, um, you, you repair them, and the next thing you do is, uh, some material.
You know, you can use epoxy or something, some of them probably have, like, a can, a can, so, out of post, you know? People do that, like, hands-me, it's like, it's like, one, one percent.
Any other questions, Mike? No. Very good, as you know, with. Uh, this is one of the easier questions, to be, uh, a lot, I mean, even the money. We're, we're walking into by the season here, so. Well, uh, constituents. They're very quiet. Uh, well, great, thank you very much for this, I mean, obviously, it's quite a process, we'll be working towards this, you know, come December, if any other questions come up, we'll, we'll definitely. All right, thank you so much for coming in, appreciate it. All right, uh, next up, Cheryl, I saw you come in, Fall Festival.
Yes, it's a week from Saturday, I apologize for being so late in here and talking to you about it. Um, we spoke to, I spoke to Chief, um, a couple months ago, regarding, um, Lee's Hour, and he also has been great with, um.
Nima?
Yeah, you know.
I know, I know what you guys are doing.
Anyway, uh, he's been helping out a lot with making sure that the sign is on. It's gonna be the twenty-first, from five to eight, um, uh, here is pretty much what we're gonna have, we have a new van this year. Brian Knipstein is letting us use the tractor trailer again, and.
You guys put that on the front of the town hall for the van?
Yes.
Okay, great, yep.
So, um, I just talked to Feenster, I'm sorry I didn't talk to you, Jeff, Loxton, but I've seen him out getting the light there, too.
He says it's okay.
Yeah.
That's right, he said it's okay.
I know, that's why I, like, Loxton said it was okay. Yeah. You guys have any questions?
About the Fall Festival? No, sounds exciting. Um, food trucks?
Food trucks, we have seven.
Okay, great, Helen?
Um, this year, four, seven.
Oh, seven, okay.
Five, or this, five channels.
And I do wanna thank Jessica House for helping out so much this year, I don't think it wouldn't make it this year, I would've been able to do it without her, so.
Great.
I just wanted to let you guys know that. And you too, you.
Chief, you have one thing, um, there is an event here at Town Hall that night.
What time?
Six thirty.
What is it?
It's, um, finding Bigfoot.
Okay.
So, trying to get the kids to stay out of here.
If anyone needs to park in the parking lot, needs to come in from the south side, because.
They'll, they'll.
And the north side, by, so.
They'll have to.
You know, they'll be, they'll be out there down here, and help them get up, but not the ideal time to have an event, for that, that, I mean, but it is what it is, it's scheduled, and, um, just, I don't know, how busy it's gonna be here.
For that event, they came before the board for approval.
I didn't do this around, I'm, I don't remember.
Chief, you do.
They, they, so, they, they.
Did, did we approve, uh, somebody renting Town Hall for that event? I don't remember.
It's the, it's the library, I think they just haul up and.
Oh, the, the library asked for several days, okay, okay, so they're using one, okay, all right, all right, all right.
So, what should I do about?
We'll take care of it, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Uh, one thing I would, again, just thinking about this is, maybe the Fall Festival people can avoid parking in the parking lot, if parking is gonna be necessary for that event, you may wanna check with the library if, if, I, I mean, are they gonna have people driving to that event? Or is it basically locals walking to the event in the air? I'm, I'm asking if you, or whoever's associated with the Fall Festival can have a conversation with the library about it.
Okay.
Just because if, if they're expecting a lot of cars coming, then, like, the Fall Festival workers should probably should not park in the parking lot, is all I'm asking.
You mean, the, the food, the vans and their van and?
Yeah, I mean, if they can park down, you know, other, because we have, like, toy parking, other, or, at the, you know, at the library, or wherever it is. I think you just need to reach out to the library about this, and you can just figure out, because if that parking lot's full, wouldn't that be a problem for an event that was approved to use Town Hall?
How many parking spots is there?
Uh, a dozen.
Yeah, hey, you can.
I assume everyone's coming here, probably people who attend the Fall Festival, but, issue, I don't know.
Uh, my guess is the library's aware of this, and so, you know, they're expecting it's mostly walkers coming here. All I'm asking is that, have somebody reach out to the library and have a conversation with them.
Okay.
About, about, about what they expect for parking at the event.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
Anything else?
No? Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, all right, wow, we're only two minutes behind.
Just finding Bigfoots before that, I'm anxious.
Yeah, exactly, I can just imagine, aren't you Bigfoot? I may even regress you off like Bigfoot. Uh, it's, uh, Bobby Kelly requests me to, uh, present to the Board of this annual Board of Health Discussion, so Bobby, floor to your side.
So, just, uh, there, you are three of the four members of the local Board of Health. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, uh, our existing one twenty-eight is updated, uh, to deflop sort of the health officer, enabled a standardization that didn't exist prior to COVID. Um, and so, there were some updates to requirements for who can be the health officer, criminal check, et cetera, uh, regular training requirements. Uh, and then it also requires that you can add it to the, the local Board of Health, meaning, uh, pretty much, how, and the Board of Health offices, uh, both board and, uh. So, um, just, once in your head, it's got settled in my calendar as reminders, just, you know, you guys, so, we can have it. Obviously, I'm available, uh, throughout the year, if anything comes up, my hellos, and we have communicated that with the things over the years. Um, I'm available to the public for any sort of questions that come up. Uh, folks, do contact me over the email that I had on the website, so if I need to sue, if you should, if you have an update. Um, I have worked with Larry Shaw within years, a couple times, on some building inspection questions, as far as mold and things like that, I can, I'll have a report. Uh, there's some home inspection reports for you, building reports, uh, for example, the, the local elementary school, there's certain, um, forms that need to be filled out from the state, um, that's the local office, you know? So, there's a number of reports, um, that I have just been, also, as far as communicable diseases, so, again, COVID nineteen definitely heightened the awareness of this position. But, um, it has been positioned for many years, uh, including, uh, discussing things such as, um, uh, you call a, 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 and, and see more of us as a job of a career. Um, try to communicate with local community members, I've had a little spot in the library, who's under for a while, a lot of people were doing this, and I, I think, but, um, my point is to try to build a presence, um, and provide some information as far as public health. On the back is the four actual roles of the health officers, so it's clear to everybody that I see this as a question, and you can, you're not, sorry. Okay, and I can, you know, let, uh, the, too, so we can put it on the website. Basically, the best thing that's been forced and is all of me, public health issues, you know, the local state laws, which I have access to all those, um, and, uh, relatively often. Educate the community on public health issues, because there's a few that I'm just, um, I've had today, and then for sure, the training qualification required to job needs. So, there's a email lister that, um, all, or most of the health officers are on, so we have things that are relevant, altered, then, here, and vice versa, anything you have, or I didn't advise of something, I can shoot it out to the listener. A couple of things I wanted to just sort of, uh, share, let folks know, it is September, so it is coming to the annual flu season, uh, respiratory illnesses in general, so, um, then there are local pharmacies, do have the updated flu vaccine, COVID nineteen booster, and they're just all, I see, next thing, that's my question, let's fill it right now. Um, and then the only thing I wanna, I just put out there as an example of something we could talk about now, or folks if they wanna contact me about later, is, you might have seen the news, um, sort of, observations of trichinemia, or West Moulah virus, these are rare, but, um, definitely real, um, ascetic or illnesses that exist. Um, we have, this year, we might say, why are we talking? We have this year, you might say, why are we talking about it now? Of course, it was passed. They're having, at this point, not more cases than have been identified all year, but at this point in the season, a couple of weeks ago. It had been a higher number than had been done in any year years past. So for example, the number of mosquitoes that have been identified with triple E or West Nile, I have a couple of graphs here from the area, is highest since 2019. So again, higher than had been passed. There's a couple of actors obviously with. This was the new temperature of the just help alert just about the case. There was the one case of that that did contract triple E and unfortunately did pass away. Again, it's still a very exceedingly rare disease, but the cases are higher as it has been passed. One of the things that I have done some investigation on preparation for tonight's meeting was just to see what other local towns and municipalities are doing as far as any sort of coordinated efforts. As a town, selectors, health officers, and any local contracting organizations. And Lieutenant Kensington and Lieutenant Exer, obviously larger towns, but they do have, Exer in particular has. Where's that fancy? This right here. Yeah. Where they have trapping. So trapping is not a required thing for municipalities. It actually sort of exists as well. But certain towns in the area have been trapping, sending mosquitoes that have been identified to the state lab identified viruses are present. And that's where those examples have come up from. And as a result, Lieutenant Exer, as an example, recently, this was three weeks ago, put a public notice saying that we're going to do some additional adulticide spraying for mosquitoes in areas. Showing the targeted area that the town is going to identify and working collaboratively with the public health officer. There is still several weeks left of mosquito season, if not, you know, over a month. And so to be perfectly honest, I can't remember where we are as a town with spraying. I know over the last decade, there's been.
Contention.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say there have been, you know, so voters have voted on whether they want to do it and then at one point with the budget and then at one point with the president. And all I'm doing tonight is just sort of identifying. I'm here, A, to definitely dialogue with you all of the questions about when it makes sense to do it, if you want to do it, how do you want to do it? This year versus next year versus this year compared to other years because of the current mosquito outbreak. You don't have to decide anything now.
It's actually mosquito spraying is something you do.
I saw that. So I had all those other materials. I'm like, I'll wait until maybe gets that one later. Or if you want to, is that like a particular level that should wait or is it relevant?
No, we can, we can move it up. Before you go there, let me just ask if there are any questions about.
Anything else?
Yeah, the role of the health officer and what he does and.
Because it's nice to actually check you out. Usually there's like one person leaving here from the public. But long story short, if you have any questions, not tonight, just think on me, I can send you the health officer at G O dot com and it's on.
And I'm sorry, you're going to put this on the website under?
I will give it to Lisa Tisha.
Yeah, great. That'd be great. I know you have some to reserve already, but that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, definitely. And the other thing I hear, just this is a link as an example of one of the other communities, Exer. If you're just interested in learning more about this year, particularly for the student more illnesses. Exer has a website linked to different educational materials, which I have a couple of as well I have to pass out. And the biggest thing that you can do as individuals is just prevent, right, mosquitoes, which most of us want to do anyway because we're knowing. But in particular, try to avoid going out during high mosquito times using repellent. Lots of things, sort of the standard, people don't think that we're all used to. But other things that you might not think of, if you have a kiddie pool sitting around on the property that has water, well, just whatever air.
Tires?
Tires. We put some rocks down on our property because there was, we had some water in March and flood season is actually much better now.
Oh, we have standing water now.
Yeah.
So those, I mean.
You know, dunks, are they toxic? You know, those little donuts from, are they toxic?
Not to you.
Little dunks.
I think it's wrong.
I don't think they're toxic to you. Yeah, I mean, you can, you can buy those at Ace and a six pack.
I'll get you. So if it's fermenting, it's not toxic. There's a number of different things.
I could use those.
So basically, as far as.
Tick or how about?
Tick and, tick and here's, yeah, they're all sort of, they're responsive to all the same kind of materials.
And that's it?
Nobody else has any questions about that? So we have officially conducted our fall conference.
Great. I get a question. I know, I thought I asked you.
I was going to ask you about this, yeah.
Okay, do you know anything about this? Why did the hospital decide to discontinue the ALS program?
So this is a public meeting and I will say I am a per diem employee of Exer Hospital, so I don't want to speak on behalf of the brand. But I do know that it was decided to, in a relatively short timeframe, goes to eliminate a program as far as the.
Effective when it was?
Ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days. Basically, the paramedic program that Exer Hospital operates and provides services to two dozen towns right here. They announced just the other day.
Yes, two days.
Yes, it is. Two days ago, that as of about 10 days, they will no longer be providing that service. I do know that Executive Counselor Stevens had an event today over Brentwood. I don't know what was said there. I don't know if anybody knows. It's clearly an issue regionally. It will impact the town in terms of availability of service. But, you know, the determination was made by the hospital to stop that service.
Was that post merger, Bobby? Was that what?
So the merger, the acquisition of Exer as part of the strategy of making it was actually a year ago, so yes. But it is, at my understanding, one of the.
Is this his decision?
I believe it was a multifactorial decision that included business.
A lot more problems that went away too.
I will say, Jack, if you would like or if you would like.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just, I have no.
Just one more second.
I have no problem reaching out to Exer Hospital to get more information from my role as public health.
And yeah, if you can get more information, great, but I mean, don't, don't.
I am curious.
Look, you're an employee there, so I don't want to put you in a difficult conversation.
Well, I just didn't want to sneak it tonight. Good. I don't know.
Of course, of course. I'm sorry. Chief?
They're going to give you the same canned statement that it's not. Just saying that we got those offices working with emergency services on it too. Not thinking we're going to get anywhere, but I guess the main thing that, you know, in talking with the Seco's chief, which is a very powerful organization. It's more or less a timing, all right? I mean, 11 days is absolutely ridiculous, you know? Hey, you know, it looks like we're going to, might be just standing this in six months to a year. It gives you some opportunities because, you know, there's a doc out there, some private organizations down there who are doing this stuff, but nobody can get anything going in 10 days, 11 days. So, you know, they have left, they have left towns like us, you know, some of the bigger towns, you know? I mean, North here can use them a lot. Exeter does use them on occasion because Exeter will have multiple calls saying that. They may say, I was a little upset with Exeter's little thing they put in there, like we're going to be upset. We have their methods to do with it, you know? I can attest that you used them 65 times last year. So, but it's some of the smaller towns. And what the chiefs have tried to do is to get a meeting with them to say, maybe, you know, maybe we can work things out. Maybe it takes. If you lose X amount of money a year or whatever, maybe it takes a subsidy, just like, you know, like you're a member of the Seco's chiefs, each town. But it's also towns that are abusing the system. There are certain towns around here and Jeff and the test, like that call ALS like everything. I mean, bloody nose, a broken finger, you know? And they're not, they're not a lot of towns in the Secos that have no skirts over 125. But if you look at the amount of calls that ALS goes to arraign a deer field in Dimea, it's huge pulling the Seco stuff, you know? We have, we have a protocol here. We have, you know, difficult breathing, you know, heart attack, chest pain, diabetics and stuff like that. It's an automatic dispatch. But you listen, you listen to some of these other towns and they call them everything. And, you know, they get, it takes a while to make the difference. You know, you'll get 20, 25 minutes out of a minute on the call and they say, I'll be on the ground. Which, which is that happening and, you know, a lot of times it's good that you don't need ALS. But I think there's a lot of problem back and forth and you, right? In my opinion, there's an abuse of any of this.
And might have been a factor in them making this.
Maybe, because, you know, they, it's not cheap to get transported ALS.
Yeah.
Of course, they're making a lot of money and they should, they'll be in your arm. But, you know, percentage of calls, I'm going to guess the percentage of calls that get canceled on is probably 40 to 45%.
Wow.
That's, you know, that's, I think the main thing to shock everybody is the 11 days.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, I mean, yesterday, you guys told me yesterday at the election, I'm like. You're kidding. Can't believe, to your point, it's one thing to say, yeah, the end of a fiscal year or the end of the year. Certainly as a regional service, you would think they would give you more of a runway so that the region as a whole can basically come up with a solution to substitute it, but.
So what's going to happen? Where are those calls going to get rammed into then?
They have to go to, you know, paramedics in Newmarket, paramedics in Exer. They have to go to paramedics at the end of the year. So those, those folks, we get a paramedic or a medicalian from those folks.
And that's like an elevated care, right, that they.
It's a high level of real hospital care, you know, and it may, may make a huge difference on, on our costs, you know?
So it's a prayer.
On, you know, strokes, on heart attacks and stuff like that.
It's going to be longer, longer response time for a lot of places and it's going to be more expensive.
And it's taxes, you know, we have virtual aid agreements, but I understand Exer without an ambulance call, they're going to, they're going to come here, it's not available. Newmarket's got two that are on sporadically, you know?
Does anybody know how many vehicles they have? How many units?
They're two units. They have two on duty which is split. But I understand they weren't just sitting there with.
I'm sure they were running around all the time.
No, they were in the hospital. They were in the, they were in the, so, you know, McGregor is strong, they, they, they help, but that's, again, that's, that's a derm response. And, you know, they usually have one, maybe two medics on at a time, so.
So Jeff, you work against two paramedics?
Yeah. They're not. I've looked at that full time as they're pervy and.
So then we're relying on Exer or are we depending on Exer?
Exer has a minimal one on every shift, but I mean.
They'll still have the paramedics, but they run on ambulance calls if they got to the ALS front?
Oh, no, Exer, Exer medical is on every ambulance call whether it's required to be a medic or not, yes.
So how many of them will we have following that?
Um, there'll be, you know, there's going to be a lot of times where we can't get a medic if you. I mean, you gotta, you gotta try, you know, we'll, we'll set something up with that dispatch that, you know, we'll go with Exer immediately. Newmarket doesn't have one on duty, we go with Exer and then at that point the slot thing is to go to McGregor, you know, it sounds like a long way and Derek is not really that far.
I even appreciate your vision, though.
Yeah. You know, I think it doesn't have, I think it does a holiday happen once in a while, case can happen once in a while.
Well, and I think the issue is the ALS vehicles are zippy, so maybe it's only quicker than the hand.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this, we've talked about this same a lot of times, so it's really drugs. They, they can push drugs or we, you know, basic EMT or even advanced EMT camp or.
They can't transport.
No, 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 but then, you know, we, somebody has a heart attack, you don't immediately transport it to the hospital. You work with that person right there till you get a stable at the end of the room, okay? So it's a lot of it is just, you know, it's just standing there, you know, picking up the hospital persons, you know.
If I had a CPR, maybe we could have come to our health officer or a lot of other class.
Jeff, what, so the Seco's chief is going to be jumping on this other?
They're jumping on it right now with, you know, we've got all got the same letters that everybody else did. It's a, it's a camp letter, it's financial thing and blah, 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 blah. But they're trying to dig into it to see, you know, hey, can we have a meeting? Can we try to find out, is this something we can save or is this something you guys already made a decision to talk, you know? And then it's.
Again, I think state certainly interested in trying to facilitate or come up with a solution. I don't know that clearly nobody solved it yet. I think it's going to take some time to do so.
You're right. It's not going to be solved in 10 days. You know, we just get a, you know, say, okay, you know, continue to.
Until we figure this out.
Lose money for the next six months and try to get something, pick it up.
I will say all this discussion is making me think, do we have AEDs in this building or other locals like outside there?
We have a cruiser.
Does Exer have, I don't know, do the paramedics only use it or does Exer Hospital only use it?
Exer Hospital, Exer Hospital employs a paramedic.
So they want to, we're paramedics.
Yep.
And.
That are seated in vehicles. Is there anyone in the ER, paramedics or?
I'm sure there are a lot of people in the ER.
That gave those vehicles and still.
They want to stop that, they want to stop their response.
They want to stop.
You know, Exer was kind of unique. Portsmouth never did it. I think Rochester has.
Frisbee still have.
Yeah, Frisbee has, you know, Huggins Hospital has it, but, you know, actually it was kind of unique, so to this area.
Well, but Douglas had it until they merged with. MGA, it went away.
But most of the bigger five departments have here on Exer staff, like Dover, Hampton, North Hampton have paramedics. We're lucky we have a couple in Newmarket, Exer, the paramedics.
So we can come out with that statement this week.
Yeah.
Just really, everybody's taken a step back claiming that Exer Hospital's mission has certainly changed. Because this, this is affecting so many communities. We have volunteers.
Yeah.
Well, I'll happily reach out tomorrow.
That'd be great, Bob. Appreciate it.
Yeah, any, any news you get that we haven't heard, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Just throwing out there for some point, we've got a letter from the board selecting supporting resolution of the issue and I don't say right now is the time. Something that we might want to consider that, hey, this is really important to our community and we'll support it and help create and help resolve this issue.
All right, absolutely.
Can I paraphrase that when you are, you're performing a comment like you might?
Oh, I think you're absolutely correct, yeah. I think, yeah. I will, I'll take it upon myself, I'm going to reach out to a bunch of the towns in here. I'll talk to their boards as well. I'm sure we can craft something the next day or two. Obviously, time is of the essence. All right. Let's, yeah, we're going with mosquito spraying right now, real quick. I know Deb, you had asked about this, obviously Bobby, with your presentation, discussion. So as Bobby noted, you know, the town has had a variety of on and off for mosquito spraying as well as larvaicide in town. There's been votes over the years by the town to get rid of mosquito spraying, include mosquito spraying. You know, it's come up every, pretty much every year for the last 15 years with respect to the budget. So we've discussed it quite extensively. At current, under the last budget, there is, there is no mosquito spraying or larvaicide going on in town. But, you know, obviously with the recent activities that, again, Bobby mentioned regarding the triple E case and the heightened awareness of mosquito-borne diseases. And the request would be that we have a discussion of this. So with that, Bobby, is there anything you want to add, that is the health officers, before we go into a more general discussion?
I would say that, hey, I'm glad we're having a conversation with whoever prompted, I think, it's great. And I'm sorry, I know you haven't been more productive about it, but I think time needs to be worked out well. Right now, thankfully, we've been relatively lucky, which is good. I think what I've learned, and I'm actually an entomologist, this is, I've been doing some research into sort of the efficacy and the duration of the living of adulticide spraying, which is spraying. Adult mosquitoes opposed to the larvaicide. And my understanding is depending on how it's done and in various places, it can have effect for up to a couple of weeks, which is good. It's not necessarily going to be the entire season, but again, building out these. It's not necessarily going to be the entire season, but again, building out these, um, one time at a certain primary time of the year, um, at different locations is probably going to be wild. I think the the board, the town, myself, if you think about ways to strategize it, if it's obviously within resource to to fund the spraying, we may want to talk to, like I said, folks in Kansas City and Exeter about sort of how they strategize it, um, because and doing it in three chunks until first frost is gonna, I think, add up really fast to, I don't know, maybe for spraying a few weeks, but if you prioritize where you're spraying, um, and when you do, it might be effective in a cost-effective way, you know, from, um, get some protective package.
Other comments? I don't know, but does the, does larvaicide or the spray, does that go into the water supply or?
In terms of the safety of the, yeah. So I, again, most of what I have been reading right now is that, um, if we were going to do one versus the other, my understanding is that doing adulticide is probably preferred, given, preferred. I do remember we had a conversation at one of our, um, town meetings, right, about our particular geography in Newfield and that the larvaicide may not be the most, again, this is not my business of spraying, uh, these, these insecticides, but the companies were saying, um, as well as folks who work in the area, that the adulticide for Newfield might be preferential to do, and they are, I'm saying, I'm saying, about, about the sort of non-toxicity of, to humans, of material, which is more, but again, I'm happy to do more of that research. And we had one in the past, I don't bring with any negative adverse outcomes as a result of spraying. Some people can have certain sensitivities if you're out and in the general area where spraying is happening, one can do that with her feet, you know, so some folks are just more sensitive to anything that you're doing to some others.
Well, one of the main issues when, when the town was spraying was especially for those along, because spraying would take place on the main roads, um, especially like here in the village with houses close to the road, it happens in summer, people have their windows open, becomes a, you know, there was a lot of concerns about, about the spraying and the issues of that.
I hear, this is an example though, Republicans in Exeter did, that it's pretty clearly communicating about the timeframe that it is going to be scheduled, indicating, I think it'd be a bit of this, right? If not, if we decide to do, how, an example of how we can structure the messaging to folks in town to prepare for it. But again, it's a balance of do nothing and potentially have an outcome or do something and, you know, prepare for it. Sort of like, it's not the same, but you know, we do, we get at one point the test sirens for, for various, um, tests and it could hurt hospitals' ears, you know, whatever, but we sort of know that it's a standard thing, important to do. So for what it's worth, I think it's something to consider at the very least this year.
Deb, go ahead.
So since the mosquito spraying stopped in town, was that a miracle?
Uh, this is the spraying, spraying, we haven't sprayed in, I would say, four or five years.
Okay.
Uh, we were doing larvaicide and then we stopped the larvaicide as well.
So we, we've been using mosquito swabs and they usually, you know, it keeps the mosquitoes pretty much at bay. This year, the mosquitoes have been twice as bad as they have been in the past years. When we are on every three week schedule, they come to spray, we had to come, have to come back on a five-week basis, just to keep the mosquitoes at bay. And I, you know, I don't like the thought of spraying chemicals into the air. People are breathing and they're putting things in their mouth, so whatever, did this system, I get that, but we also haven't had this threat of triple E that kills people in, in eight, eight towns in Rockingham County alone, don't ask me the, how many towns they are, but just me, towns in Rockingham County alone are testing positive for the triple E.
You know, just, um, there, from the mosquito vaxin tracking that's been happening, the mosquitoes have been tested positive for triple E, we have not, um, eight humans with triple E infection. I just don't want to share that.
The mosquitoes are testing positive, they're testing positive and they come to bite you on the ankle, you're going to have that.
I completely agree, I just wanted you to turn that, correct.
Yeah, it's, it's not eight cases of people with triple E, it's eight towns in our, in our county alone with mosquitoes that are testing positive for the triple E virus. And I, I don't know if mosquito spraying would even, would even help that, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea until the frost hits to do something, even, you know, I don't know, the spray trucks that went by the last time, I remember running around, as soon as I'd see the brake pedal light, hear the bomb go around, close on my windows, I get it, I don't like it, but I, I love my family, I don't want my family to be dead either. And my grandson, who's only four, wells up like he would leave a leaf from a little mosquito egg and after the spraying, you have two weeks.
Other comments? Scott?
For the record, um, products like Biffen, um, that's spraying is highly toxic to honeybees, so there's a give, there's a give and take.
And that, that was actually one of the issues, um, when we, when we talked, when, when, specifically on the issue of spraying was raised, because there are several actually people along Main Street who have hives who had concern that.
And that's why I think that the larvaicide, you know, like you mentioned, I think that was pushed in years past because to avoid the.
The spraying.
Yeah, well, destroying the population.
Yeah, the disease.
So why not try to do something low, low impact like that, like.
What different?
Could we distribute those dumps to every person in town and tell them to put it in the, the.
Well, I, I don't want to delve down a rabbit hole tonight on this, but, um, the larva, so when they did the larvaicide, you know, it's, it's not, as, as much as you think it's your backyard, yes, you know, you have standing water, there can be an issue with mosquitoes. The, where these all mosquitoes come from is from out in the woods in, you know, wet spots and wetlands and, you know, and the mosquitoes will travel and they can all define, find your host and do what they do. Um, and so as, as much as we like to think, well, you know, I can, I can, if everybody does something like that, that's, that's really not addressed, really won't address the issue. And this is, in the conversations that we had over the years about this, you know, one of the concerns that was raised is, can the mosquitoes companies please show us the efficacy of the dunks or the larvaicide in the spray? Show me data that says, yeah, see, yeah, exactly, and, and, had never been fourth one. And that was always, in my opinion, a big, uh, red flag as to, I, I get it, it's, you know, you, you don't want this to happen in your community and you want to take measures, but at the same time, as a, as an official who's overseeing other people's money, I'd like to know that when we're doing something, it's gonna be effective. And this was the one question that I still, again, to ever see somebody say, look, here, um, you know, outside of DDT, which we're not gonna use, which, you know, there's plenty of data about, um, it, it's the, it's the, you know, dragging mosquito spraying here and they didn't spray there and you see there's a huge difference that, you know, is statistically significant in the mosquito population or the number of triple E virus cases, or, you know, testing of, of mosquito batches, et cetera, et cetera. So this, as, as I think many of you have indicated, it's a, it's a question of, are you getting what you're paying for and are you evaluating that and does it make sense to use taxpayer money, money to do this or not? Um, you know, my suggestion is, is that, you know, what do you know, it's budget season, uh, this will come up in the budget, I mean, we'll, we'll have discussions about all this. Does the town want to partake in this? Certainly if somebody wants to put a warrant article out there, um, if, you know, if they don't see the budget turning out the way they want, you know, the town's not unfamiliar with addressing this on a, on a regular basis. Bobby?
I just want to say a couple things. One, I do have a couple of articles, I do agree they are part of the time and it's mostly because I think it's hard to study.
Yeah.
But I can send those to you if you want.
Yeah, yeah, awesome, you know me, I'll read it.
Yes, you, you, my stuff, thank you. Um, the other things I would say is, um, in Exeter's posting that they did just a couple weeks ago, they specifically highlighted areas that were the treatment sites and they were, such as the Exeter High School complex, Main Street Elementary School, Park Street Common, Exeter, so like they identified areas and sprayed around particular perimeters that were areas of congregation from a number of people, which I think if the select board is on the fence about sort of higher degree of mosquito company to spray the entire town, perhaps an alternative that would probably be less costly and may, um, bend the curve of efficacy and cost effectiveness, uh, if they were to focus on a couple of areas like the elementary school, town hall, um, I know there's a little park around the, the town landing, you know, areas where perhaps, um, there could be value from it and it could be, um, noticed, publicly noticed pretty effectively. I would be a little disappointed if, I hear what you're saying, Michael, about waiting for, I don't see them to better connect here, but, um, right, if we wait to, to fund any of this until next season, this particular season is going to come to go and, you know, the first frost is, it's changing every year and actually, it's probably how this is getting a little later every year, um, and so we probably have at least another month or so, if not more, of time to think about it, but it's not, I, when it's budget, budget to do at a certain point, but how many is not, but.
Correct, oh, yeah, the vote, vote is obviously important. Any other comments?
I didn't hear, the gentleman on the end, I'm sorry, I don't hear your name.
Scott.
Scott, I didn't hear, um, the ingredient you said is, is.
The common name is, is, uh, Biffen?
Biffen.
Yeah, but it's, uh, Itherin or, I, I, I can't remember.
I'm one of the bits of, by that, but I can't remember. By, and, that's what Exeter did spray.
Yeah, and, and, and I saw that, that they were doing that and I looked, looked up the MSDS, um, which I think, if we're gonna do any type of spraying, we have to be conscious of what the product is. I mean, there's, there's other things in there for the toxicity of fish and stuff, so, um, you really have to watch what you're spraying.
Is that typically what is used in, um, mosquito spraying?
Yeah. I'm not, I had, I'm just seeing if you use it the next time.
Yeah, and I think Dragon was using it for the streets playing, it, it, they used a different stuff, I think, for, uh, the larvaicide, different, different, different chemical, um, different efficacy.
Yeah, didn't Exeter just have, um, a problem with a bunch of dead fish in the bay?
That I don't, I don't remember.
I don't think those are connected.
Yeah.
But it's possible that they did.
All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, all right, we'll move on, we got more, more stuff on the agenda today. Queen Court RFP is the next item. So, uh, we've had for several meetings, you guys have had the Queen Court RFP, this dealing with the, uh, the.
Survey.
Yeah, doing basically inland survey, um, just in and around Queen Court to better define what, uh, are the lotlines down there and to make suggestions to address what may be, um, odd lotline conflicting with the road in the butters there, um, trying to better rationalize it with respect to, uh, Queen Court. It's been an ongoing issue for years, um, and, uh, the, again, it doesn't mean that we're definitely gonna do this, but the idea is to put an RFP out, see what it would cost the town, see if, you know, we have an interest in surveys to do this. Um, I don't think it would take long to do and, again, the idea is, given the vagaries of the deeds and, um, the descriptions of the lotlines down there, uh, this would better clarify and presumably provide us with a way to, at a certain point, uh, likely do some lotline adjustments to better define where the town street actually is and where the property owners' lotlines stop. Uh, legal consultants looked at this, they provided, and it's, I don't know if you guys have any other issues concerning your question about it?
I'm good with it.
You're good with it, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, putting out an RFP for survey work at Queen Court.
Second.
Second, I hope, I'm happy. All right, great, thank you very much, gentlemen. Uh, Ready Rides, Ready Rides has made a request for five hundred dollars? Five hundred? I thought it was in here. Five hundred dollars, uh, for this year. Were they, were Ready Rides on our, I know we did an approval of.
Yeah, we did not, yeah, we, they only got a handful of those, like, request first, so we only did those once.
Okay.
Ready Ride has been.
Yeah, they, they just, there's a request, it came in later than the other.
Yes, and they have, I think it's fifty here.
And we did two hundred and fifty last time?
Um, I believe that's it. Yeah, I think it's two fifty, which is why I think they, five hundred, I think.
They're asking for five hundred.
Two years, so they have received it.
Okay. Um, again, this is one of the nonprofits that, you know, request funding, I don't know what your thoughts are?
What did the, Kisha, what did we spend, what did we have in that account, what did we spend?
Hold on, we have revenue expense? All we have, any other questions or comments, please throw them out, I'll, I'll hit this up. How much, how many other, uh, charitable organizations ask for money and do we accept, do we say yes or?
What's the protocol?
We'll, we'll break it down, how much we're ready to pay each one, we'll try to balance it out.
And usually.
And I think we're like, only thirty-five hundred this year.
Use services, what looks like.
We did like thirty-five hundred this year.
I think it was somewhere around that, yeah, I think, and I think obviously it was like the, I'm not sure, but I also want to check the count, but I.
And you gave two fifty last year or did not give any?
We didn't really last year.
And now they're asking for five hundred?
The past two years.
Past two years.
Trying to recover.
Oh. I would say give them two fifty, that's it. Uh, so.
Let's hear them, so.
Help, uh, help, is this under, help agencies?
Was it under one?
Uh, hold on, direct, direct assistance, no, that's, that's, that's welfare. Uh, forty-five hundred, we've distributed thirty-three fifty, so there's eleven hundred fifty in there.
Eleven hundred and fifty?
Yep, remains on, on the budget line. If I'm reading this correctly, if, if that's the right, right one.
Right over.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, I think that's right. So, um, I mean, I don't have a problem. Ah, I wouldn't give them five, everybody asked more than we should give them five. Do I need three hundred? I mean, this is.
Fair, I think three hundred prices.
Great, I'll make a motion to provide three hundred for Ready Rides. Second, I hope, I'm happy. There you go, Ready Ride's at three hundred. All right. Uh, next up, Vernon Family Noise. So, um, this has been an ongoing issue, um, with respect to the notice of decision and based upon the notice of decision that came out December twenty-twenty-two over twenty-twenty-three, uh, we did some, uh, basic noise monitoring of the events. Uh, in the past, we have provided that data to Vernon's attorney after we received it. In the past, we have provided that data to Vernon's attorney after we received it. The current ordinance for noise is 50 decibels. The noise data that we collected showed significant periods of time where it was going over that that noise. They were required under the notice of decision to obviously abide by the noise ordinances in town, given the allowance for amplified music that was provided in the notice of decision. Over this season, we have continued to receive complaints from our butters with respect to noise. We have not done any enforcement at this point in time. I kind of bring this up early in the year, but with the legal action taken by the butters, I thought it would be appropriate not to delve into it until we at least had some semblance of where that legal issue was going. At this point in time, though, I think it's appropriate for the town to look at hiring an independent third party noise monitor to basically make a determination as to whether there is regular violations of the noise ordinances and give us a basis to either not do anything or to do something to enforce the notice of decision that all parties had agreed to the town as well as Vernon Family Farm. I asked the legal counsel about this, if this made sense for a course of action. He thought that would be the proper course of action while the data that we took, you know, was, was done in accordance to the requirements of noise collection. He said that having an independent third party would be advisable if we were to consider any of the precautions. So at this point in time, I'll raise to the board as to interest in going up and looking at an independent third party to do this type of collection so that we can have a more formal dataset in order to determine whether action is necessary. So with that, I'll open it up to the board.
The others. For 2023, we did the monitoring, there was a butters monitor, and then we had the discussion probably two or three separate meetings ago regards to necessity of having an independent monitor with the appropriate qualifications and standards to ensure an unbiased situation on that. There has been numerous violations that have been reported by butters, but then we also had this area of five formal complaints that have related to the police department in regards to sound. Vernon Family Farm has been noticed on this multiple times. They're fully cognizant of the noise requirements and they're fully cognizant of the fact that there would be noise monitoring. It's an ongoing problem, the butters have still attested to that, and there doesn't seem to be any resolution before you can do any enforcement, you need to have a law tag. So that much to base it. My one concern would be that it's too poor, what this would incur if it starts costing the town, should the town be paying for it or should Vernon Family Farm?
Park?
I don't think we should pay for it at all. I don't think necessarily the Vernings necessarily need to pay for it in full if the, if they, if something like this is requested or is, and you're asking for enforcement, then I think it should be taken upon the people that are complaining about it as well to foot that bill as well because you're the ones who are, have an issue with it. Now, the only thing that I will say is this, what about lawn mowers and landscaping equipment and the rest? That also has, is well over the, the sound. And how are you going to monitor that? How can you, how can you monitor that across the board and make sure it's fair in the whole town? It starts to get to be nonsense. I'm not saying what you're, what you're both saying is nonsense. I understand that maybe the music was loud in the past, but I mean, there's got to be a level of just common sense here and to say to them, we want them closed because we don't like their music. I mean, how loud is, is it shaking your windows? Is it?
Hold on, hold on. Let me respond to the, I think there's a couple issues here. Park, one is, you know, the noise ordinances themselves are actually provide a numerous amount of exceptions for things like equipment and et cetera. And so as much as I can appreciate your concern about, well, there are other, you know, other noise, noises that exceed 50 decibels, that's, that's actually addressed in the noise ordinances. So the second thing is, is this was an issue, a much discussed issue through the planning board and the notice of decision as to a specific concern about the activities and the town basically allowing the activities at that site contingent upon them adhering to the noise ordinances. And as such, the town and the Vernon Family Farm were the two parties to this agreement and it, they agreed that they wouldn't exceed these, these noise levels and they had to. And it's been clear through numerous occasions that the town was aware that they, they appeared to be violating this. Obviously, the neighbors have been raising the issue and to be perfectly honest, I have seen very little done to try to address the noise issue. If, if this was an important aspect of this notice of decision because they were operating in a residential area that under normal conditions would not be allowed, but because of the vagaries of agrotourism, the planning board in this town said, all right, we will try to make some concessions. We will try to, you know, allow certain types of activity as long as it's going to adhere to these conditions. That's why this has become an issue as opposed to somebody else complaining about, you know, a lawnmower. If somebody wants to complain about lawn mowers, we'll address that issue. But clearly this is an issue that has been raised before this board, before this town on numerous occasions and is, in my opinion, has reached a point where we need to do something about it and address it because it's clearly violating the noise ordinances and I think it's violating that notice of decision and in my opinion, we can't just turn a blind eye to it and we can move on.
Yeah, I would add that that I reject the premise that the term should burn the family farm.
Yeah, I don't think that's it.
The objective there is to comply with the notice of decision in terms of the conditions of the citizens of that decision. And as far as.
It's not for me to speak for them. No, no, we're not, we're not saying you have to. I want to make sure.
We're on both sides. I'm hugging at it, saying.
Yep.
And as far as shipping burden to the butters, when they are not the most responsible for the violation to me is contrary to the intended notice of decision.
Other comments from the board before I open it up?
No.
Do you want to go first, mine is probably a lot?
Sure.
Bobby? Bobby, go ahead.
Especially since noise pollution actually does fall under a couple of, a point of. I am just curious, when you said 50 decibels, I was a little surprised because I, I remember that that is an ordinance, and you might be in an agreement, but they don't have.
So under, under section 472, under our ordinances and noise control, so it's based on both, it's in a residential zone, so under residential use, at nighttime, it's a 50 decibel maximum.
Okay.
And this is taken at the, at the property line, slow meter, at least four feet off the ground.
All right. So I'm just, because at least easily publicly available on the list of ordinances that are on the website that, too many names, there's a thing that's a noise ordinance and I can see it again.
There are, there are some general noise ordinances, but this is actually specific to the measurement of noise on, within, within that ordinance.
And then the second thing I would say is just for what it's worth, 50 decibels is equivalent to, just Google is telling me, the sound of quiet conversation, a quiet overheater, a model of a rainfall.
I'm just. No, no, no.
It's not 50, 65. And 60. 65.
Nope.
Yeah.
Oh, that's 65. Ma'am, can I? Guys, guys, don't do this, please.
So like, literally, I was just seeking for clarification as to what the ordinance was and then I guess expressing surprise that it's 50 because 60 decibels, normal conversation, electric toothbrush, 70 washing machine. So just if you wanted to revisit.
And again, if this was in an industrial zone or the commercial zone, they're different. If it's daytime versus nighttime, they're different. Under, again, section 47, noise control, 472, there's actually a table there, maximum permissible levels for. So I'm just making it clear what I'm citing and then again, utilizing that aspect of it, which again, under the notice of decision they agreed to this. And this was, this was a long conversation that was had regarding basically amplified
... has not been changed. And he made the statement that he didn't give cable long enough to move the speaker. He kept simply on the... He chose not to... Now, December is end of this season, as stated that one of the main relations wasn't in the season, it's talking to a candle up our honor. But let's talk a little further about that noise. It's not just amplified, it's amplified and put over a P A system. Not one, planning board members, even though it was directed, even back as early as 2015, the noise is going to get this in the... No, one person came to my home. Not one person came to hear at that point. Yes, Michael came to do testing, absolutely. But there's been nothing as far as that goes. We're talking about amplified music over P A's. The sound meters of all of us have our professional sound units, but they're not waiting for bass. So even under, and for amplified music, the density of that music trends of those decibels past power volume. So it can be at sixty or sixty-five decibels at my property line, it's still at sixty or sixty-five decibels more than sitting around. It is still bouncing off my windows. It is still heard inside the house with the bass. To your point, I have never allowed my grandchildren, who are more than one, to look along during their events, try to keep respect of all those things. They never had the con- concept of coming over and discussing us. They knew that before this point in their house, no past, it may be different. When I brought it up, based on the change, we just chose not to change it. So there's credibility issues as well here at this point. It's still, I shouldn't be responsible for monitoring something they haven't agreed to do and follow the ordinancees. So to put it on somebody else, who is someone who is trying to be respectful neighbor, as we put it, is not admirable at all. We have made a great number of concessions. They now have bass, some noise. That was very worshipful. After I did my service, I would sit on my porch, listen to worship. I couldn't do that in this town, so I'm back. Not without hearing some country folks on this street speaking about how whatever else, I really didn't go, why go to my worship? Can't open our windows, because again, even at forty decibels, it's loud when you're in my home. I shouldn't have the right to peaceful enjoying of my home. I have no power with them doing that. I would expect that they keep the noise on their property. They don't have any noise to elevate to do that. When it was accused for music, which, when we moved in and we researched this, we were told it was twice mine. It was a postable. It would never be more than a town would allow it. It happened. It's been talked about. Has now, three or four years down the road, nothing has changed, other than they were held to trying to keep it within the decibel. To Scott's point...
Have they lately, have they lately?
They were over on Sunday.
I mean, just in general...
They went over the decibel sign zone.
Okay.
None less than.
So over the year, though, I mean, over this season?
Yes.
Has it been considerably lower? I'm just asking, I'm not trying to bait you into...
It is still going over the sixty decibels, really. They're still not on even the sixty decibels, which to my point, is still too high.
So there are some things that they could be doing, for sure.
They could go back to postable music.
Or they could be, they could have some kind of buffer for the sound, uh, that...
They're, they're, they're kind of tricky between my house and theirs.
Yeah.
So there is a buffer. Without them putting up a very expensive sound lighting system like you would do up in...
I have mentioned to them to put, uh, even like hay bells. Hay bells are an incredible, uh, sound insulator, and it would be incoming with farm. So, I mean, just something like that. I, I'm not saying, no, don't do this test. Uh, I mean, I, I just kind of interjected my own thought on it, just saying, all right.
You assess it anyway, and I wasn't quite finished.
All right, finish up.
Thank you. So I think that the number of things that I have, and one is that the amplification has to be looked at. Because again, if agritourism, which is marketing, to be able to sell farm farmers, make people aware of a farm, and reminder, these, this situation is being done on two acres of unencumbered land in Los Angeles area, that's where they can do this. With maybe fifteen bucks, all right there. One of the first things when you read about agritourism is that you understand assets and what those assets can actually accomplish effectively. Nobody said anything when they were doing the case to music, because it does, true point, become a lot of background noise or white noise, similar to a lawn. It's not invading my home. Once you amplify over P A's system and you're not measuring for bass or horns, trouble. It, it creates a different environment. So again, even at forty or forty-five, because I just have a decibel here, again, it's not weighted for that, I do take outside the inside. There's very little difference with my doors and with those doors.
So sixty-five, uh, sixty, how much is...
So at nighttime, at, uh, the limit is fifty db, and daytime, it is sixty db for the residential level.
And, and it's, and the sound, uh, and the sound quality at sixty is someone that's just talking?
I'm, I don't, I'm not audiologist, but I mean, with the normal conversations, so it's actually making me nervous, talking to property, because it says sixty decibels is normal conversation.
So they wouldn't be able to operate it and do anything?
No, again, and this is my point, we're talking about a normal conversation.
Yeah.
If I had a normal conversation and put it over a P A system, it's going to sound incredibly different than this conversation right now.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the space that that same noise travels without ever changing. It's the density of that noise.
I think, okay, so, and I'm not trying to interject my opinion on this, I'm just giving a suggestion. Then do the test, do the, do the sound test. We go back to them and ask them to have some kind of sound buffer between you and between your property to, to offer something that gives a little more...
They have a buzzer on three accesses of their property.
Understood.
So they're ready enough to do a buzzer on each side and then along the road front.
Yes, understood.
I mean, it...
Or, or move the speakers, or whatever the case might be, I don't know.
Supposedly they have. They can, I would stop him on the slide, too, because he is dark in the background. If Michael is over there.
Scott? I'll do the decision to place them on speakers.
Yep.
Speakers are currently pointed towards my house. So with the placement of the structures between the bandstand and my house, the opening between the structures acts like a funnel. So if you, if you, you know where we sit the monitor...
Yeah, that's right, the monitor right across.
But if I walk with the meter back towards my driveway, I get a louder reading between those two structures.
Of course.
It's acting, and what's on the other side of that, my house? You can't watch TV, it's impossible.
I actually get readings in the front of my house that can equal or greater to Scott's point than in the back of my house, because it hits my neighbor's house, but it's back.
So let me, let me, just sorry, Betty, I think that's the right expectation. The concern here is that it is an ongoing issue that there are likely violations of the noise ordinances that they agreed to abide by, and that in order for the town to be able to justify taking formal action, this is the suggested route that we take. Yeah, maybe we have an independent noise monitor, and he says, look, these are the two or three things that you should do. Uh, it may be that, you know, it, the, the issue here is, um, you know, greater restrictions on amplified music. Who knows, I, I don't know what the solution is going to be. But I think in order for us to responsibly address this, this is, this is what we need to do to be able to have a basis to make any decision. And so, unless there's any other comments. I, I will make a motion that we move forward to look at hiring an independent, third-party noise monitor to, uh, provide the town with suitable information to make a determination as to whether the notice of decision being complied with and potentially any recommendations to address it.
My issue with that is who's paying for it. And when you say that we hired her, that's not going to be his town dollars. And I oppose the town spending money on this when its responsibility lies at feeding birds. So if we do this, then it's in my position, birds are culpable because they're the ones that's generating the situation, and they have not demonstrated that they're able to comply with the requirements of the ordinance and the notice of decision, that they're culpable and responsible for this cost.
But you don't have to ask them that, I mean, that's, you have to have their...
There, well, I, they're present. Let me, let me say this, let, let's, let's take this as a step. Let's find out what, what the hell this is going to cost.
Okay.
Uh, and then we can have a, a conversation about how to address the cost. Um, I, I should absolutely appreciate what you're saying, O B. Again, the notice of decision was, there are numerous places in the notice of decision that deal with noise, and it basically said, you need to keep the noise down because you're operating a residential zone. It was an extensive discussion at the planning board and then with the select board entered the notice of decision. So from that standpoint, um, I, I think you're right. Uh, they have a responsibility to adhere to the notice, and if they're forcing the town to basically take this action because they're not adhering to it, then yeah, I think it's, it's worth looking at, at, at having the, the opposing party address somebody else.
I have one more thing, O B.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the other concern is consideration is the times of the events are during prime time when people are hoping to be able to take advantage of the enjoyment, but also avoid off the stage, maybe use directions for the neighbors. People don't know what's going to happen, so they don't know what happens if it starts at night. You can't keep it silent, maybe the money's over. So again, there's, there's things that they can, they can communicate, but as far as being business, there's costs to do business. And there's costs of knowing what you can do, researching, and doing the work that which simply goes along with them. The task, I would agree, the term of court, which is all, is already under the first stage, or not known as violation, doesn't seem very, very probable, probable, whether they're going to do this. And I think the other thing the town has to consider is the one thing that agritourism must talk about, whether they're not, as I said, is about the safety and health of the community first. The other thing is that they can't affect the property value of the others. Location, condition, location, those reasons that say that. If I am sitting next to someone that, or houses, or the body center of someone, it's not music. So that when you can't do your own thing, or your own account, when you hope to know about, it is affecting the, 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 the properties, it is a reason, and you're going to go there, that one, it has words, and it wants, it's favorable, at least.
I understand all that.
Sorry, I...
Yeah, I get it, I get it a hundred percent. I think, I think my, my whole, whole intention, just with this, the past, was to say, all right, so we can't, we can't just simply shut down the business.
No, we have to shut down the business.
That's all I was getting.
Yeah, no, and...
Mark, can you leave that right there?
I, I, look, Mark, I think you're right about that, that, and again, I think, I think people are misconstruing, the concern that's being raised as you're just trying to shut us down, as opposed to, yeah, apply, apply with the notice of decision that the town said, yeah, if you, if, let them in this set of rules, it won't be a problem. And I think that's, that's really the issue here. It's not an argument about shutting it down, it's an argument to say, you need to do these events as you promised to do them and comply with the, the, the rules that you, you promised to comply with. All right, so, what's that?
Three, three dollar motion.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we formally look at identifying what a third-party independent monitor would, would cost and what services can be provided, and, uh, based upon that, we'll have a, a discussion of how to deal with the cost of that.
Second.
Second, I hope you're all fair.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, don't oppose, just...
Abstain?
No, I wouldn't abstain, and I, I will say, fine, let's do the monitoring, uh, but the decision-making thereafter...
Oh, that's a whole other, a whole other discussion, Mark.
Yeah.
We're not making any decisions about that. It's all going to be based upon the information that we get back. We're not making no decisions about what should take place or should not take place. This is, the whole, the whole rationale for this is, we need to get independent, third-party information so we can properly assess what we may or we may not do it, depending on...
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Uh, next up, uh, G R V L charity bike race, uh, chief, they talk to you about this?
Yes, this is something that's been going on for years, uh, come from the board, previous two years, uh, we've got, I guess, this as no implications on the waste department, um, and it has sent through, um, two different rides, one's a thirty-mile ride and another one's a fifty-five mile ride. Uh, roads that at the end affected is Mash Road, Oaklands Road, um, and Vault Hill and eighty-seven. So we're going to have a park signage of what they have, uh, previous years on both the holes, the several cycles on the road, ultimately it's leaving at the Monty Open, Exeter, Stradeline, or in the, by Metra, but that, that's where they leave, that's where they end. Um, it's basically going through Exeter and stuff like that. Um, there's no detailed offices, uh, it's not going to affect traffic, you know, traffic's not going to stop, uh, maybe they provide the insurance binder, um, that they have, and it's more of an informational bit. And the event is October twelfth, um, and they're expecting that it would be through town, uh, thirty mile ride from ten fifteen to eleven fifteen, and then a fifty-five mile ride from ten fifteen to about twelve at the end.
Any questions from chief, from the, the information on charity? Uh, chief, do we need to just give our approval for using town roads?
Um, I can send a video, our, who will just...
Let's, let's just formally say, I, I'll, I'll motion to allow the G R V L using town roads for the event as described by chief. Second, I hope you're all in favor?
Aye.
Now, just for our basis. Uh, last item, one correspondence, um, Scott Wasmer, complaints and correspondence, I think hoping to add some material on this.
On the fifteenth...
Of August?
Yeah, Mr. Watson sent us a letter referencing the town ordinances of signs. Uh, and in that letter, there's a recap of the history, uh, going back to two thousand fourteen and fifteen, with references to, to representations by Attorney Manzelli and the ordinance that they would comply. And since then, fifteen, eighteen, eighteen, twenty-three, and numerous times in twenty-three and twenty-four, this has been a subject of discussion. In March of twenty-four, they received a cease and desist order, and stated that they were compliant only subsequently after March of twenty-four. August of twenty-four, signage in the driveway, contrary terms and conditions of the, of the D O T, uh, reference to, uh, sign placement easement on three hours twenty-five, contrary terms of conservation easement, which was addressed by the Conservation Commission Chairman. Uh, health needs signs, and it's been a continually ongoing issue despite representations to the contrary, that there would be adherence to terms and conditions, not only in this own ordinance, but in previous notices of decision from the planning board and previous multiple representations by the ordinance, that they would comply with the signage. As was referenced in the last cycle of meeting, which was the partake in, there's three choices, either comply with the signage, do not comply with the signage, with subsequent consequences, or if it gets, the ordinance changed, which also, along the lines of getting the ordinance changed, it could go with Mr. Lawrence, and see if they can get an exception or a variance, or whatever term it is.
A special exception?
The term, the term of law that suits you best.
Aye, aye.
So, that is the history of the issues. Then, we received a letter from, uh, Mr. Watson stating that after the last event that we had last month...
Last meeting?
Yeah, the last meeting, on September, he threw the venom out that, uh, this sign itself was in breach violation of setback in regards to property. So that's where this is at.
Okay, uh, comments? No comment. Uh, any thoughts or recommendations on resolution? I know you've, you've been looking at this one.
Yeah, I think it's... So we sent out a cease and desist letter, and Attorney Manzelli, Mr., or, or represented that they're going to comply. And then we turn around and within a month or a week or two weeks, we see a retreat back to previous signings about disregarding of the signage. It, it, it's not rocket surgery. This is not our estimate. And if they have an issue with it, it has the three options I referenced in the bill, then follow the third option and see either a special exception, can, is that appropriate?
Uh, what about the sign?
Yeah.
Uh, that's not available. Because, because our, our ordinances do not have a criteria to meet, they have to allow for a special exception for signage. Variance might be a possibility.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm not speeding up a term.
Yeah, 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 no, a special exception is not often, they have to have to that, they have to have...
You have to go for a variance.
Oh, seven, ten years ago, so.
So here's the bottom line, they could have done that. They're fully cocked on the logo sign or ordinance states. And it isn't like that we can go as a select board, which by the way, our board requires us to enforce the ordinances of the town, go, oh, well, we're not going to pay attention to this one because there's, we can't choose and pick which ones we choose to enforce, whether or not we agree with it. So it's either enforcing it or meeting. Negotiating and meeting are responsibilities as a member of the executive board of the
Um, so at this point in time, do you have a specific course of action that you would
Do you want to look at one?
Sure, I'll go, but I have any comments from the technical? Scott?
I'd like to see the town enforce the RSA six, seven, six, seventeen. Um, this is not going to stop. Anytime you get mad about something, well, I'm approaching another sign. Um, one section in here says, I can repwire this to you. It says, tell me something through civil penalty of two hundred and seventy-five dollars for first offense and five hundred and fifty for subsequent offenses for each day of such violation. It's found to continue after the conviction date or after the date in which the violator received written notes from the municipality, the violator is in violation, whichever is earlier. So if you don't need to take lead action, the board can do that. I would just like to see this to, to stop, okay? This, the sign ordinance is clear, one sign. And I had no problem with the original sign, very nice sign, marked the location, everyone could find burner, family fire. That was in, you know, I don't know, when was, October, it might even have been earlier than, than October in two thousand fourteen, but by the fall, you know, November-ish, there was days changing signs off of the original sign, opening in December, and then listing all the products. Uh, I think I supplied you with a photo of that, Jeremiah standing there, you can see, you know how tall he is, uh, just in general, and you can see all these signs there. It's obviously more than one sign, and it's more than six square feet.
That's down there, that's down there.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but then what is happening is, all of a sudden...
The sandwich board?
Bill?
You're talking about the sandwich board?
The sandwich board sign, then, I, I think I supplied the board with another picture, the sandwich board was there, and then there was another sign actually.
Okay, have you seen that, have you seen that in the past month?
The sandwich board sign's there today?
Well, that, I mean, sandwich boards are...
It's in their property, one, I remember.
But, like, we, we had a discussion about sandwich boards at the, you know, with respect to the last meeting, um, sandwich boards as temporary... Um, sandwich boards as temporary signs, different set of the ordinances that address temporary signs.
I would respectfully disagree with you on that. It is all under four point six. And then four point six point one says the following shall apply to all signs. And then it goes on to go four point six point one, point one, point two, point three. If the planning board wants to break out temporary signage, then it should be four point six point two, not four point six point one. And they should do four point six point one and say the following shall apply to all permanently mounted signs. And then four point six point two, the following shall apply to all temporary signs.
Uh, I understand your point, Scott, I think, um, and I've, I've asked the town planner and I've talked to members of the planning board about this issue because you raised it with me. And, um, I, the intention and the way that the planning board and our town planner reads that is not the same as the way you read it. And, um, I, look, I can appreciate if you think that there's a technical aspect to this, but it, it, and I think any plain reading of the ordinances, it's clear that temporary signs, for example, the flag signs that Duncan Donus puts out temporarily or a sandwich board that, that Swamp Duck puts out periodically, are seen as temporary signs and are not, and the language in that section dealing with temporary signage does not require adherence to the language for the permanent signs. So I would say, if, if you think that that's really the problem, take, take it with the planning.
I'll take that.
Yeah, take it up with the planning board and have that conversation.
So in regards to last meeting, um, the, the sign, the sandwich board sign was held by the road back in March, okay? Under RSA two thirty-six seventy, the definition of a political sign is not what that was. It has to do with, um, being for, uh, somebody running your office or advocacy.
If you can, no.
Please read this stat.
No, no, wait, 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 it does, after that meeting, based on that point, is, it was advocating for the, uh, the election or defeat or the passage or defeat of particular measures on a ballot is what qualifies as political?
I respectfully ask that you read RSA two thirty-six seventy and then, and then also read the second part of RSA two thirty-six sixty-nine, which, which is a policy.
Instead of splitting hairs here.
Not splitting hairs.
Uh, I'm just asking you, instead of, instead of, uh, going back in March to rehash this, have you seen this sign, uh, coming out again after all of these conversations? I mean, part of this process, I do believe, having everyone in the room, just like you had just, uh, you spoke your piece and I got it, I understand. But at the same time, you can't keep picking the scan on certain things that have happened in the past. We bring them in the room here and have, have it, and hash it out. Okay, I mean, that's part of the, that's part of the process, is it not? And have they brought this, put the sign out, uh, again?
So what about, what about the sign that the big billboard sign is on, contract needs to be handled? That just happened.
And they took it then. Well, they were, they were told that it was a violation and they had to approve. So when you have this conversation.
But it still ends up being more than one sign and product.
Scott, I, I get it, and, and to some extent, I feel like you're playing whack-a-mole, right? And, and I, at the same time, there's only so much that, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, we can do. If there's a problem, if the problem was raised with us, we will try to address it and do so anytime we can. We will try to do that. I, trust me, I understand the points that you're raising and I, I think some of your interpretations of this have been correct. I think some of them aren't necessarily correct, but I think that there are things that we can address. My point here is, um, we are trying to address these complaints. I think that we have, uh, been, uh, addressing them as they come along as a board in public meetings. Um, I think some of them have been addressed. Some of them crop up again, and if they crop up again, we're going to have to address them again. Um, I, I, I'm just saying that, look, I, I get it, there's been violations in the past and we've been trying to address those. If there are future violations, I think, you know, the point that you raised certainly with respect to the, the specifics of the sign ordinance of the one sign, it's something that I, it hadn't occurred to me before, but clearly it's in the ordinance. So we'll continue to address these things. Uh, as they come up, as they arise, we'll try to do enforcement of it. Uh, I, I can only promise that that's going to be the case, is that we'll, we'll try to make sure that, you know, the ordinances are followed in an unbiased manner. That's what we can tell you. I, I don't know what else, what else we can take. We've been, I think we've been making an effort to enforce this, uh, to the extent possible.
So what if, what are you going to, what are your thoughts on the amendment that you submitted?
Well, is there any existing violations right now?
The amendment?
Well, so.
Oh, the setback issue, oh, signage setback. Uh, I, I would suggest that I, I would like to talk to the town planner and the, and the planning board about the signs in, in the issue of the signage setback. Um, you know, I, I'd rather get their perspective of this with respect to, to, to that than, uh, make a determination tonight on that. But we'll take it up.
Okay, just, just like I said before, the original thing was, I believe it was December fourteenth of two thousand, December sixteenth to two thousand fourteen, it's now two thousand twenty-four. Just, just saying.
I get it, I get it, but there's been a variety of issues along that, along that course.
I think we have, I mean, there's some recesses.
I mean, you, to, to, I, I, I think it's, I think it's disingenuous to argue that over the years, we have not been trying to be a responsible board in enforcement. Well, you know, trying to do it in the, and that certainly allows the property owners to address these issues. Look, I prefer not to find people. I prefer not to have to deal with any of this, right? Uh, but I think that we have been fairly persistent over the years. Maybe not as persistent as other people want, but, you know, I, I think we're doing our job. And I think it's not fair to argue that we haven't been doing our job. All right. Uh, all right, let's see, what else we got? Uh, prior meeting minutes.
I'm going to put those off.
Uh, the R twenty, they're quite long. You know, we can put those off till the next meeting, table for next meeting?
Yep.
All right, excellent, I like that idea. Uh, revenues and expenses, uh, given the length of this meeting, yes, if you want to review those and bring comments back. Excellent. Uh.
Put this off for another time.
The audio? Yeah, we can do the, we'll do the audio at the next meeting.
But you have it in writing.
Can you, can you put those three items just on the next, next communication? All right, any other business that the board members have to bring up? Appreciate you guys being here for a long, convoluted, and long discussion meeting. All right, without, I'll make a call to adjourn. Second by Ovi, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dan. Can't really. Uh, it's on now, so, I think it was one break, but yeah, otherwise it's, I think it would be pretty long to hear.